Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember, I'm sorry. Councilmember Schlegel.
I think he's here.
Is here, okay. Uh, Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Weslek.
Here.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you. We have a couple of council members that will be joining us virtually. Councilmember Dibala, I believe, is at an NLC meeting. Um, and Councilmember Schlegel is joining us remotely this evening. Uh, apologies for the delayed, um, start to tonight's meeting. We had a meeting before this meeting because we're elected officials and that's what we like to do. Um, so, so, uh, we met this evening at 6:30, um, in a council administrative function session to discuss the city manager's evaluation. Um, in, for tonight's agenda, we have a item that is for the record. Um, Just Serve Award Presentation to the City, so welcome. Uh, followed by, um, a couple of work sessions this evening. The first is the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. And the second is Board and Committee Appointment Recommendations. And then the last work session this evening is a continuation of the Public Safety Task Force, um, Recommendations Follow-Up. In terms of upcoming agenda items, on Wednesday, July the 23rd, the city council will have another administrative function session to discuss the city manager's evaluation. That will start at 6:30. On Wednesday, July the 23rd, um, that evening at 7:30, the council will meet in the auditorium. We will have two presentations that evening. The first is the Washington Advantis Hospital Site Fencing and Demolition Presentation. The second, um, where we'll be joined by Advantis Health. Uh, we will also have Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study Presentation. And we will be joined by Montgomery County Public School Staff. We will have two voting items that evening. The first is the First Reading Ordinance Approving the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. And the second is Resolutions Providing for Appointments, uh, to Boards and Committees. We will then have two work sessions. Uh, the first is a Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study Preferred Option, um, draft resolution the council will be working on. Um, and the second item is a Proposed Resolution on the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Work Plan. On Wednesday, July the 30th, the council will meet at 7:30. Uh, we will begin with a presentation, the Quarterly Financial Report Q4. And then we will have a series of voting items. The first is the Second Reading Ordinance Approving FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. Resolution Designating a Preferred Option for Piney Branch Elementary School. Resolution Approving the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Work Plan. Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Grant with the Less Play America for Play Day. Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Indefinite Quantities Contract for Street and Sidewalk Work. Single Reading Ordinance Approving an Extension of the Contract with Casey Trees for Public and Private Tree Planting. And a very well-earned resolution providing for the city council's summer recess. Um, the council will, um, then go on recess until Wednesday, September the 3rd. And so with that, we will move to our first item this evening.
On Wednesday, July the 30th, the council will meet at 7:30. We will begin with a presentation, the quarterly financial report Q4. And then we will have a series of voting items. The first is the second reading ordinance approving FY26 budget amendment number one, resolution designating a preferred option for Piney Branch Elementary School, resolution approving the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations work plan, single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant with the Let's Play America for Play Day, single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an indefinite quantities contract for street and sidewalk work, single reading ordinance approving an extension of the contract with Casey Trees for public and private tree planting, and a very well-earned resolution providing for the city council's summer recess. The council will then go on recess until Wednesday, September the 3rd. And so with that, we will move to our first item this evening, which is the Just Serve Award presentation to the city.
There's a microphone over there. Go to serve there.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Crockett. I am with Just Serve. Wanted to come tonight to present the city with an award. Service is one of the critical aspects of any of our communities here in Maryland. Not only does it create a community, but it creates a great community. So on behalf of Just Serve, we want to thank you for being champions of volunteerism and to help stitch together the social community, which is Tacoma Park.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. We say all the time, we punch well above our weight class, but it is because of the activism within our community and the desire to give back and to serve. So it is an honor to be recognized by your organization. We definitely appreciate it. And I believe there are some photos. Yes, so let's go around and make sure we're able to take the picture. Well, thank you again to Just Serve for coming out tonight and recognizing the city. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? There are no voting items, so we're just going to go to general public comments.
Good evening. My name is Randy Gibson. You might even remember me. Ward three. I have a couple of brief comments on the contents of the recently issued rent stabilization RFP and the process of its adoption. Regarding the content of the RFP, I find it gravely misaligned from the city's own housing and economic development strategic plan. Its strong alignment with only one of the three goals creates a dangerous bias. Due diligence requires balancing the study with a focus on the impacts to our most vulnerable. It means the council making sure that the goals of protecting renters and preserving affordable housing are front and center. Regarding process, our robust rent stabilization ordinance is a cornerstone of who the city is and how we value both tenants and the racial and economic diversity in our community. On this important subject, I am deeply uncomfortable with the council's lack of open policy debate that should have informed the RFP. Since the RFP words and goals were not openly debated, we are told that prior discussions were adequate. Were they? What changes might council members have asked for that were not included? The lack of transparency on the policymaking process behind this study diminishes both your voices and the public trust. Looking forward, residents will hold this council accountable for upholding city values that include a strong rent stabilization ordinance. I challenge you to, one, find your voice and your values, and find and listen carefully to the voices of those most vulnerable to ordinance changes, that is low and moderate income renters and small landlords. When, as I hope, you defend housing affordability, ask yourself, affordable to whom? More options for whom? When you consider housing priorities, consider strengthening tenant protections. Lastly, ask whose voices have you not heard? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Karen Elrich, Ward five. There have been two vetted incidents of residents being forcibly removed by ICE in our town, Boyd and Carroll, 410 in New Hampshire, where day laborers gathered to find work. I've read what the city has put out, and I've heard from many people like, what does it mean to be a sanctuary city? Not what's written down, but what does it mean in our hearts and what we do on a day-to-day basis? I'm wondering if you have the names of the people that haven't picked up? Do you have the ICE's A-list number? These are public and are available. And there are many nonprofits in Tacoma Park that work to support people who have been picked up by ICE. So these are the things that we're looking to the city to absolutely help make happen. There are people who have got together to figure out how we can find a way to find out where ICE is, so that we can videotape it, so that we can warn people that that's where they're at. There's a lot of stuff going on. A lot of it is disjointed. We're not used to this kind of work in the United States. We watch, I don't know if you guys watch the news, I'm sure you do, you watch the, you know, the horses in the parks. I'm not fear mongering here, I'm talking about what really has happened, or the things that I know that has happened. I just listened to Jamie and Mark talk on his thing. I would go there and listen to how scared they are. And we're going to be looking at what's happening in our schools, we're going to be looking at how we're going to feed more people. Yeah, I already see more houses going up for sale in response to people losing their jobs. And as we take a look at what it means to be a sanctuary city, what does that mean? Not just what's written on a piece of paper, what does that mean for the residents? What does that mean for our council? What does that mean for our police force? These are the things that we need to know. What can we do? When these people start walking in without ICE on their, when they're wearing their black outfits and their masks and they're not giving their identification, if it's happening elsewhere, eventually, it's probably going to happen here. I don't want to wait until it does, I think we need to talk about it beforehand. There are a lot of people organizing in groups, large groups, small groups, but I would like the city to figure out what role you can play, other than just then put out the thing that you put. Can you be the one who lets us know the names of people who've been removed? If you can, you don't have to, I don't know if you want to do it publicly, or if you want to do it with the folks that actually offer lawyers and supports. There are a lot of trainings going on. Maybe the city could offer free rent for people to have trainings.
I'm so sorry. I think, I just want to make sure the time is up.
Okay. Oh, it is.
Okay. I can sit here and listen to you go on, because I'm like, yep.
But that last thing, is there a way the city can make places affordable for more and more trainings? You had one here from Casa. It'd be nice to be able to have it in the smaller ones and maybe in the larger rooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. Bill Elizabeth Wallace, still Ward one. Regarding the Public Safety Task Force recommendations, I strongly suggest another task for the important position of public safety auditor. But first, I'd like to take you back about 10 years ago. Imagine, you're about 12 years old, maybe five feet tall, slight build, female of color. You're in a huge courtroom, in a huge courthouse, the District Court of Maryland in PG County. You're sitting in a large wooden chair, it's too big for you, it's positioned sideways, it's the witness chair. Across the room are two prosecutors. Far from you, to the left, there are two judges. But to your right, there are two men, just a few feet away, at the defendant's table, a lawyer and his client. Him, you recognize, and you tremble. He's over six feet tall, head shaved, bearded, muscled, huge compared to you. Your parents are somewhere in another room, you feel alone and small. First time you ever saw the huge man, he pointed a gun at you. You were in the backseat of your parents' car, driving down Route 50 in Bowie, Maryland, your parent was driving in the left-hand lane. The huge man had been following your car, then swerved around and pulled in front of it, and suddenly, he applied his brakes. Later, you learned he was angry because your parent wasn't driving fast enough for him. Your parent barely avoided crashing into him. When the huge muscled man passed your car, you saw him point a handgun at you, and that's why you're here now, as a witness. Now he's sitting only a few feet away, and he's smiling. Behind the prosecutors, all the rows of seats are empty, except one woman watching. Behind the huge man, all the rows of seats are completely filled, filled with policemen in uniform, sitting shoulder to shoulder like a wall of boulders. Their badges read Tacoma Park Police Department. It's where the huge man works. The judge asks you a question. What county were you in when you saw him pull the gun? You're confused, you don't understand, it was just a highway, you say, trembling and puzzled, what's a county? There's more. But city council members, you know how some things just stick in your craw for years? This has stuck in mind for a decade. I ask you to add a mandate that ensures that no witness in a trial for a Tacoma Park police employee feels intimidated by a show of force or any other reason, that ensures an impartial court watcher or the public safety auditor is assigned to take notes and report back to you and the people of Tacoma Park, that ensures that no one is afraid to testify in any trials or anything, like road rage, fatal car accidents, or sexual assault of a minor. Even if the officer was off duty, even if it did not happen in Tacoma Park, maybe especially for those reasons, inspect what you expect, think about it, act on it.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Tom Gagliardo, I live in the city of Tacoma Park. All of you represent all of us, regardless of which ward we live in. Earlier today, I received a copy of a publicly disseminated article about Washington Adventist University's plans for the development of the abandoned hospital site and the campus. I shared that with you by email. That publicly disseminated article boasts how the university cooperated with, or the city of Tacoma Park cooperated with the university to change the zoning so that redevelopment could take place there. Before anybody says, ah, another anti-development speech, I have always supported the concept plans put forth by Washington Adventist Healthcare and the university in November of 2022 to build multifamily housing, other rental housing, and townhouses on that property. That article prompts three questions, several questions. One, when were the development plans for the university first made known to the city staff? This cannot be new. Two, when did you, the mayor and council, first know about their development plans? Three, why hasn't the information been shared with the community? And what is planned from here on out regarding development at that site? You've got the university scheduled to present on demolition on the 23rd. There's more to the story than demolishing the existing buildings. Please don't keep this secret as you do so many other things.
Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Ward four, Herbie Hancock Avenue. I am still not a lawyer. I am also a better researcher than an advocate, so I'm hoping to get some hope for county advocacy on tax matters. Most folks know that Tacoma Park residents pay the highest taxes of anybody else in the county, but the city council is not entirely to blame for that. The county publishes a chart of all the taxes involved, including the various different types of taxes and the various different areas where they are charged. And yes, there really are that many different taxes in that many different areas. I'll focus on four cities, Gaithersburg, Rockville, Washington Grove, and Tacoma Park, and on the taxes that folks in those cities pay. You'll notice highlighted in yellow, the municipal district rates, those are the city taxes, 5522 here in the city, and those account for some of the differences in the totals. But also in orange, you'll see highlighted three other taxes, the metropolitan, regional, and recreational.
Hold on one second. Can we make sure we bring up the presentation? And we'll make sure we give you back your seconds.
Okay, so highlighted in yellow are the city taxes, and that accounts for some of the differences in the totals, but you'll also see three taxes, the metropolitan, regional, and recreational taxes, that are charged to folks in Tacoma Park, but not to folks in other cities. The county has a frequently asked question page that covers those three taxes. The first two are by-county parks and planning taxes, and that complicates matters, so I'm going to focus on the recreational tax, which is Montgomery County only. And as the page says, this tax is levied to defray a portion of the cost of providing, maintaining, and managing recreation facilities, with the exception of Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Washington Grove, which have their own separate tax levies for this purpose. Well, those cities may have had such tax levies in the past, but as you'll recall from the previous page, they do not have those tax levies now. As it turns out, the only thing that you have to do to qualify for the exception is to have the tax county law on your side. The relevant law is the establishing of the Recreation District, or is hereby established as special taxing area, to be known as the Recreation District, with the boundaries of which shall include all of the county, with the exception only of that area now or hereafter included with the incorporated boundaries of the city of Rockville, city of Gaithersburg, and the town of Washington Grove. You'll notice at the end of that, that this law dates to 1965. Well, things were different in 1965 than they are now. The city of Tacoma Park didn't have a recreation department in 1965. It only had a recreation division, which covered the library, recreation, and parks. And there were no full-time employees for recreation per se. And of course, back in 1965, the city was divided between Prince George's and Montgomery Counties, and wasn't even the entire size that it is now down in that southern portion. So it's not necessarily surprising that the city was treated differently in 1965 than the other cities were. But that difference has big consequences. The recreational tax that we've been talking about adds up to $1 million paid by folks in Tacoma Park in the course of a year. The other two taxes bring that total to $3.5 million that people in the city are paying that folks in other cities don't get charged. That $3.5 million, of course, is a lot of money in terms of Tacoma Park's budget, but in the case of the county and its $7 billion budget, it's a rounding error. So what can be done? The good news here is that the relevant law is not part of the county charter, so it is easier to change than would otherwise be true, it's part of county code. One possibility is to simply add the city of Tacoma Park as one of the places that accepted from the recreational district. That adds five words to county laws, and because I'm a serial comma fan, it adds two commas, not just one. Since it's true that the other jurisdictions are not charging a separate levy, it's also possible to go ahead and say, all right, we will add those folks back to the recreational district. That does not get any immediate gains for Tacoma Park, but because it spreads the tax burden over more taxpayers, eventually, the burden for Tacoma Park folks would be reduced. My sense is that now is a good time to pursue this matter. The city council and the county council have escaped budget season. We have a city resident as the county executive, we have a city resident as the county council president, and we have a willingness as the county to take in less revenue when it's a matter of doing the right thing, as witnessed the fact that they have recently gone to zero bus fares. I hope the city council will help me in advocating with the county for tax fairness for Tacoma Park with respect to the other cities. I believe this is a way of getting tax relief for city residents without cutting city tax revenue. I have provided sources for all the material in the slide, and of course, I have provided contact information, folks, and feel free to be in contact with me, any questions. And thank you. I hope I didn't run too long.
Thank you very much. I was perfectly fine with you going a little long, Arthur, thank you. Okay, do we have any other general public comments this evening? Okay, do we have any virtual general comments this evening?
We have Mary Machuie on the line.
Hi, Mary Jane Machuie, are you on the line? Ms. Machuie?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm just saying, I started Parents with Special Needs Adults in Tacoma Park in July 2015. I've been having problems. People don't want to admit that their sons or daughters or loved ones have special needs, and there's been kind of a rift between the have and have-nots, and unfortunately, I've been the have-not when it comes to money. And I'm having a really difficult time with property taxes this year, because it makes no sense to me. I've got a 2025 homeowner's property tax credit application here, but then it gives me, I don't want to have to send in my 2024 income taxes with a 2025 application, it makes no sense to me. And I have a friend who's having a hard time with it, too. I mean, she's worked for the city for 50 years, it's a crossing guard, and why in the devil should she have to pay something like, I think, $8,000 a year for her property taxes? This woman has no money. Why in the, she's a senior, her husband was in the military, just because she owns a very small park property, I think in North Carolina, they're giving her a hard time. What in the problem? Why can't these taxes be fixed? I mean, it's bad enough we have to pay them, but, I mean, the system is against people. It's really against people. It's completely insane how way it's set up. And hopefully, Cindy, you'll help us some out with this, because I've got something here that gives me an HTTPS form, that URL that I could supposedly take, but it's cut off. They sent it to me, cut off at the edge, so I have no idea what the URL is. Why they be, it's incompetence, I'm sorry. I mean, if you want us to pay taxes, at least be competent. And thank you, Arthur David, for extolling it, that people think that low-income homeowners, a lot of us who are Black Americans and/or like me have a Black son who is disabled, why can't we get a tax break? I noticed in Boyd Avenue, there was all the Black people moving out, and it's mostly, mostly white, wealthier people moving in. And I think that's a disgrace. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Do we have any other public comments this evening? Okay. All right, so we're going to move to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening?
Councilmember Hanzat.
Okay, I can see everybody wanted me to go first tonight. Thank you, mayor. I just want to say thank you to our speakers tonight, I really appreciate everybody who comes out. And several things I'm just going to flip through quickly. First, this week, I had the pleasure of meeting with the national team that designates main streets in the country, and as they're considering the possibility of designating Long Branch as a main street, which I'm really incredibly excited about, and I think all of Tacoma Park should be excited about. And it's an effort that's been spearheaded by MHP, that also runs our Discover Long Branch Business League and the events in the area, and has been supported by a number of other local stakeholders and electeds. And I'm just super-duper enthusiastic, they interviewed me, among many others, in our area, I think, trying to get a better sense of what's possible in this main street. I don't know for a fact that this is happening, but we're eagerly anticipating an announcement in the coming months. And I think it's an important step forward, given the opening of the Purple Line, among other things. Tomorrow is Coffee with a Cop at Koma, 9 to 12, please, please come on out.
We got changed on that.
What? It did. Okay, I haven't heard that yet.
It's August 7th.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. August 7th, I understand, is that right? Did I get that right? Okay. I hadn't gotten that memo yet. And thank you to our city manager, Deputy Eubanks, Director McNally, the mayor, and Delegate Charcutian today. We had a dialogue with Essex House executives about long-term plans for emergency planning. As you know, there was recently a three-day outage of the AC in the building, and we had a really extensive dialogue, and I'm appreciative for all the attention that's going to that in line with our city priorities. I hope we'll see some progress. Thank you, Arthur David. Enlightening, really rigorous analysis, as per usual, lots to think about there, I like those ideas. And I'll look forward to discussing that with colleagues. We also had a dialogue this week with Bethesda Cares, and I want to share that this is very much aligned with the recent dialogues we've been having about public safety and all and also just happens to be in line with, or related to things that I have been observing going on the last several months in Long Branch. There's been a substantial change in demographically what you see happening there. A lot of people have been passing out in the Long Branch business area, even vomiting that I've never seen on the streets, people sleeping, homeless people that I haven't seen in years. And, you know, on one hand, I'm glad that we are seen as a safer place, possibly, by some of our immigrant populations. I'm hopeful that that's one of the reasons they're here. But there are some other more concerning factors that are happening, such as homeless people who don't have a place to go. And, and these are all different kinds of groups of people that we're seeing. So if you have noticed the camera that's gone up at the corner there, I just want you to know that that is our police department that has put it there. And I want people to know as well, for those that feel really concerned about seeing cameras, although it was not my specific ask to put a camera, it was my specific ask of our department and others to take a look at the area, try to find some short-term and longer-term solutions for what we can do. And Bethesda Cares is a very important part of that problem solving as well as our broader dialogue on public safety. And I also want people to know that I have walked the streets every single day, two times a day, talked to every single business owner in the area that's on Tacoma, even on the other side, and a number of the residents in English and in Spanish. And every single person I have spoken to that is operating in that area and walking and using public transit is really relieved to have that camera there. And it's made a difference already. There are only a handful of people right now that are hanging out in the area and people are able to use the bus shelters for the first time in a while. It's not a long-term solution. We are looking towards much more complex solutions. So please feel free to reach out to me. This is the first, first public statement I've made about that. And, and then finally, I just want to pass the baton over to the mayor to talk a little bit more about your very important dialogue about ICE, Ms. Elrich, as well as what's planned for the Washington Adventist site, if she has anything to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Trying to make sure I am keeping. I think I saw Councilmember Dabala's hand before I saw Councilmember Landman's light.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great.
So I just wanted to say to everybody that I have made it to the meeting, although virtually. And in addition to having laryngitis, I am also at the National League of Cities Meetings in, in Columbus, Ohio, representing the city. But I am listening to the meeting. And I will let the mayor know if I have comments later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Hope you feel better. Councilmember, I think I saw Councilmember Schlegel. Yeah, you, when I had laryngitis, you sound far worse than you feel. Councilmember Schlegel.
I'm so sorry to hear about your laryngitis, Councilmember Dabala. I, too, am participating virtually this evening, traveling with family. So I appreciate the city making this option available. I'll keep my comments brief. First, I wanted to just echo that, what you said, Councilmember Hanzak. We have similar concerns in the Lower New Hampshire Avenue area. Residents concerned about drug use and homelessness and not from a standpoint of simply fearing for their own safety or security, but really fearing for the well-being of people. And so I do think that if we can redouble our efforts as a city to develop cross-border cooperation, not just with police, but with social services as well. I think that that's something really important now. I thank Karen Elrich for your heartfelt comments and your emphasis on what are we really about? Like, where's our heart as a city? And I think it, it takes courage to ask that question. We can often be caught up in the legalities and setting up studies and collecting data and all these sorts of things. But truly, not only with regard to activities that are, that are putting our immigrant community in situations of living in fear, but really across the board. I truly believe that our heart as a city is that anyone who's here gets to stay here because we are, that's what community means. And I found a connection with that in what, what Randy Gibson, what you shared, as well as in what Mary Machuie shared. Just the idea, let's do everything we can now more than ever to make sure that whether we're considering ordinance changes or informal practices or communication with other agencies, that we are putting first the idea that anyone who's here should know and feel secure that they can stay here to, to every extent possible. Arthur David, thank you for bringing that up with the Recreation Tax. And I do wonder whether, if we've been paying that for decades, I wonder if that's some kind of bargaining chip that we have now in terms of getting the county to pony up for a new recreation center. Seems like we've been putting a down payment on that for a long time without realizing it. And lastly, to Mr. Gagliardo, I appreciate your comments very much. It's, I'm still new and I'm still trying to figure out where the line is in terms of what our staff are privately discussing and, and what is going on behind the scenes in terms of economic development. I have, I've been assured that there was, there were no conversations going on between staff in terms of directing, in terms of Washington Adventist Hospital providing input on the zoning process. So what you have, what you have quoted from the article is news to me. Last, volunteerism is so important. And I just want to give my accolades to everybody across town. But just being on Ward 3 listservs, it's amazing how many things are people just taking their time to offer their help, propose ideas, invite people in to make change happen and to care for those in need. I, I, I think we are a city of volunteers and it's a beautiful thing. And I'm thankful for that reward.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mayor Cersei. I think if we can succeed in making those changes to the, to the recreation regulations, we should invest a small amount of that money in the solid gold key to the city for Mr. Olson. And it's definitely of interest to me to learn some more about that. I wanted to follow up on a, I want to thank the other commentators this evening. And I think you, Mayor Cersei, might touch on some of the issues that we heard about. I'm especially interested in, in the issues about ICE and maybe about the Washington Adventist site. And I'll leave those to you. But I did want to say a couple of other things to follow up on what we discussed last week with respect to our cyber issues and, and our databases in the police departments, cameras and data readers for license plates. I had a very interesting conversation with our, with our delegate, David Moon, who was involved in, our District 20 delegate, who was involved in the enactment of state legislation addressing related issues. And he said that, you know, this is something that was of great concern to the state as well. And that he gave me some insights into how this issue has been addressed and how we, some things that we ought to be taking a look at there, what the potential vulnerabilities are and some of the experts that we can turn to on data, electronic data privacy in the security realm. So I look forward to following up with the staff on that, how we can sort of home in on that and how he might be able to advise us on, on how to do that efficiently. But it's, it's worth following up on. And I just wanted to also flag that this past couple of days, once again, we've had some storms. And once again, we've had some outages and surges and problems with Pepco that resulted in yet additional injuries to proper damages to property of people in my ward. And I appreciate very much the work that the city staff has been doing with Pepco to try and address the damages that we've had already. The city has experienced hundreds of thousands of dollars of damages. And, and the residents in, in my ward have also had many of them, tens of thousands of dollars of damages. So a thank you to the city staff and to Delegate Charcutian, who have been already in conversations with the Public Services Commission. And I wanted to let the folks in Ward 1 know that folks are working on this. We're not there yet. And who knows where it's going, how it's going to turn out. But the problems persist. Efforts to address it persist. And lastly, thank you to the residents who came to my coffee with the council member this past weekend. I heard from several people with concerns about how the rent stabilization rules affect them. People, especially small-scale operators, small, either ADUs or with unit, a small number of units and how the, their frustrations with red tape and regulations. That gave me some ideas for how we might address the impacts of rent stabilization for small-scale landlords that I think will be helpful to try and make sure that people can continue to stay in their homes, especially landlords who operate small buildings and people who are living in low, low-rent properties. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly touch on some information I provided last week about the funeral arrangements for the wife of Tony Carey, who was my opponent in the last election. I spoke to him yesterday. He's in good spirits. But he wanted to let me know that the funeral arrangements have been canceled for private, personal, and family reasons. So anyone that was planning to attend, that, that service is no longer going to be happening. I'm going to thank everybody for their comments as well. I, in, in response to Mr. Gibson and, and your concerns about the rent stabilization law and, and our plans going forward, I have had some conversations with staff in housing and community development. Good conversation, some about tenant opportunity to purchase law and its impact on affordable housing stock. And I've also had some conversation with my colleagues. I look forward to having more conversations about that as, as well as some other things with the community as well. So, and I, and I thank you for your conversations as well. Had a good weekend with some former police officers. And so many of them retirees. We met for reunion. And it was a very good event. My biggest takeaway was that so many of those officers who worked here and, and went on to other places really value the experience they had with this police department. And, and taking their experiences to other police departments found that this police department better prepared them for what they experienced. All of them really missed this place. And that was another takeaway. They missed the city. They missed the work environment. And, and really, again, valued the police department. So a good weekend with former colleagues. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Westlake?
Thank you. I, I first want to just mention that I found out recently that there was some extreme flash flooding in my hometown of North Plainfield, New Jersey. So I'm just saying that my heart, my thoughts are with all the Canucks back there in North Plainfield. I spent a lot of time this week learning more and being in conversation with folks about Piney Branch Elementary School. Earlier this week, I did a tour of the Lunch and Learn program at the school that's renting out space at the school. So I want to thank Shayna Fulter and Dora Suarte for taking some time to walk me and my daughters around and get to see what they're doing there, as well as to get a better, a close look at some of the facilities there. And also, last night, I had an online town hall for Ward 6 residents, primarily to talk about Piney Branch. And I want to thank the folks that turned up for that. I had, we had some really good conversation with some primarily parents of young kids, including babies, you could hear in the background, knowing that these are the kids, these are the people that will be impacted by, hopefully, or hopefully will benefit from a much better facility. So I just, just putting that out there again. I know next week, we're getting the presentation from MCPS. I will be remote. I'll be traveling to visit family next week. But I'm very much looking forward to that meeting. And if any folks want to talk about their thoughts on Piney Branch, in particular, parents of young kids, please reach out. I'd love to hear what folks are thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlake. Councilmember Gilbert?
I'm sorry, Mayor. And really quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to the chief and Lieutenant Williams. They put together some really nice gift bags for the retirees and former officers that really made them still feel connected with the police department. I thought that was a good gesture. Just want to say thanks to the chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Well, one of the joys and the pains of going last is you don't have to repeat some things. But then you, you also sometimes remember things over the course of everyone else speaking that you might have forgotten to give updates on. So I have a couple of updates. The first is regarding ICE activity in the community. As people may be aware, there was a verified account of ICE in our community. The city released a statement based on the information that we have available. I think it is important for, for everyone to understand that the city is doing its due diligence. We are working with Congressman Raskin's office. We're working with Senator Van Hollen's office. We are coordinating with members of the county as well as state staff as well to, one, make sure that we're able to quickly verify accounts of ICE sightings in the community. But also, as we learn more about the individuals that are impacted, trying to make sure that we're able to direct resources. As of right now, we don't have any additional information regarding the individuals that were detained by ICE. We are working to try to see if there's more information that can be made available. I do think it's important for everyone to understand that it is a requirement for individuals that are detained to sign a release, which is available on the ICE website, to allow for the release of their information to third parties. So that is also something that can create some delays in terms of obtaining information regarding the individuals or perhaps their impacted families. But I want people to be assured that we're doing everything within our ability as a city to continue to highlight the resources that are made available. We have a website that includes things like red cards and the like. We're also doing our due diligence to make sure our staff are, are trained in terms of what to do should ICE appear in this municipal building or our rec. department. But we're also working with advocacy groups to make sure that we are, that our messaging is not only serves the purpose of recognizing and acknowledging what's happening to the community, but our community, our communications also don't inadvertently create challenges for individuals and their families that are impacted. So we have been, and I have been in a communication with CASA. They reviewed and also gave us some feedback that they thought that the statement that we released was the right amount of information, especially because right now, it's important for us to keep in mind that we're trying to protect not just the individuals that were detained, but their, their family members and others that may be directly impacted as well. Also want to highlight that in partnership with CASA, myself, along with Councilmember Hanzak on Saturday, we're able to do some canvassing. And we were able, I was able to get them to come to Tacoma Park to do some canvassing of businesses and members of the community in Tacoma Park. So my hope is to get more. And so as I hear about there are more volunteers in the community, trying to figure out the right way to direct volunteers to organizations like CASA because there's, there's training that has to happen in order for people to be prepared to do canvassing work. And they have a pretty robust training program and system to help volunteers understand how to conduct. and system to help volunteers understand how to conduct this type of canvassing in communities. So if there are different groups that would be interested in volunteering, please send the name or the organizers. We're happy to try to bridge connections where there may be a need for more volunteers. But I do just want to make sure that people know that we're doing what we can within the city to verify ICE accounts, to make sure that the community is aware that they are real, because that's another issue. We want to make sure that we're a valuable source of verified information, because, you know, there's stuff that goes out on Facebook, there's stuff that goes out in different mechanisms, and we want to make sure that when we put out information, that it's right to not cause people to have a lot of fear. But we are doing what we can within the city to try to make sure that we're providing necessary supports. In terms of Washington Adventist University, I appreciate the issuance of the press release. I just want to remind everyone that we're talking about two separate organizations. There is Adventist Health, which is responsible for the hospital site, the fencing and the demolition, and they own the hospital site. And then there is Washington Adventist University, which is a university on the site with the hopes of purchase and the hopes of doing further development on their site. I think that there was some comments regarding whether or not the city with the MMPA. I just want to remind folks that during the minor master plan amendment process, Washington Adventist University did testify in support of increasing the zoning for the area in hopes of trying to provide more housing. So I want folks to understand, I think that they're, it happened a while ago, but I need to make sure that people are presenting accurate information. They testified, they did provide public comments alongside the city as it relates to the MMPA. In terms of the press release, at this time, the city, you know, it's private property. It is an outlook plan that they have. As far as we know, there's not been any development permits submitted or anything that has formally gone forward to the city. What has happened is they said, hey, this is what we would like to do, which is what was in that press release. But there's been nothing formal from a city's perspective in terms of their development plans. And as we know currently, Adventist Health owns the hospital, not Washington Adventist University. So we are, and one of the reasons why we are appreciative of Adventist Health for coming out next week to talk about their plans for demolition and their plans for fencing, is to make sure that we're getting accurate information from the horse's mouth, and the council has the ability to ask questions of the presenters regarding future plans for the site. In terms of rent stabilization and the RFP, I know I'm going long, y'all. But I want to thank our city staff for continuing to move forward with this, getting the RFP out and the possible information that could be useful for the city. I know that there's been a question of which goes first, the chicken or the egg? Do we get the data so that we can have informed conversations regarding the policy? Or we talk about the policy before we get the data? And I think it makes sense for us as a council to have the information from the, from the study to enable us to have the policy discussions, which was outlined in terms of the timeline for this project, which will happen in the spring of next year. So hearing the results from focus groups, hearing access to or the analysis of our data will enable us to better pinpoint where we, as a council, would choose to focus. The council will have an opportunity to vote on the approval of the award of the study contract. So I don't want people to think that the council has not, you know, this is, once it's done, we don't have any other say. We have to approve the procurement. But I do, and I stand firm in thinking that in order for us to have an evidence-driven approach, we need the evidence. And so having the results from the study to help inform how we choose as a council to direct any policy amendments, I think is critical. And lastly, I am tomorrow meeting with seniors. I've been invited by the Asian Community Relief Association, which is a nonprofit organization serving the Asian community, to meet with a group of their seniors tomorrow. So I am looking forward to that. And I think that is all I have, and I've gone over. And so with that, I will turn things over to City Manager Dispirito for City Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and our guests this evening. I want to start with some information from the library. The interim Library and Recreation Department facility at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue will be closed to the public beginning July 30th to prepare for relocating to the newly constructed and expanded facility here at 7500 Maple Avenue. So July 30th, the interim site will, will close. Both departments will be open for regular operational hours through Tuesday, July 29th. The Recreation Department desk will close at 5:00 PM, and the library will close at 8:00 PM that evening on the 29th. The library does not charge overdue fines, so no one will accrue expense during closure. And we encourage patrons to check out as many items as they would like to enjoy while we are relocating and preparing to welcome them back into the new facility. Digital collections will remain available without interruption throughout this time. A more specific reopening date will be announced once key relocation milestones are achieved. But the library anticipates reopening shortly after Labor Day or, you know, at the latest, perhaps very late August, if possible. A formal ribbon-cutting is being planned for mid-September, but the precise date for that is to be announced. The Recreation Department may be able to resume regular operations in their new offices sooner than the library, and we will provide updated information when those decisions are made. Also from the library, this Sunday, July 20th, we are hosting Reviving Traditional Photography Workshop. This event is led by Dr. Rasha Shashin, Senior Archives Conservator at the Egyptian Museum in Cairo, Egypt, and Visiting Full Right Scholar at the National Archives. Please join us at the Hefner Community Center Building in Hefner Park. It's 42 Oswego Avenue. From 12:00 noon to 4:00 PM for a unique hands-on workshop exploring 19th-century photographic printing techniques. Participants will gain insight into the historic, artistic, and conservation aspects of analog photographic processes. This event blends STEM and humanities for a fun weekend afternoon learning experience. From recreation, as summer fun continues, it's also the perfect time to start thinking about the upcoming 2025-2026 school year. And that means planning for childcare at New Hampshire Avenue, Before the Bell and After the Bell program, and childcare at Maple Avenue, morning edition and afternoon edition programs. These before and after-school programs are packed with engaging activity, creativity, and fun to support your child all year long. For more information, please visit www.tacoma park m d.gov/recreation. Don't wait to lock in your spot for a great start and finish to the school day. From the Police Department, they announced in a note earlier today that Coffee with the Cop has been postponed to August 7th. Please join the police for Coffee with the Cop on that date for casual chats, cool or hot coffee, and community connection. Whether you've got a question, concern, or just want to say hello, they're ready for it. It will be held at Koma Cafe, 8006 Flower Avenue, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And get ready for some National Night Out fun on August 5th from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock PM. Mark your calendars for an evening of games, treats, and great company. National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under very positive circumstances. And finally, from the City Manager's office, two items. One is, I just want to acknowledge my appreciation to the Public Works employees today. I provided lunch for them at the Hefner Center. We had a great gathering, a chance to share thoughts and ideas, a chance for me to share some information about the budget that was recently passed by the Mayor and Council. We also touched on a number of employee initiatives that we have presently going. And importantly, it was a wonderful opportunity for Director Darrell Braithwaite and myself to listen to any questions or concerns that the employees had. We had 28 employees today, and it was our privilege to serve them lunch and to get them out of the sun for about an hour. But they were wonderful, and as usual, their ideas, suggestions, and comments were super intelligent and really grounded in, you know, the reality of what it takes to provide services to this community. And I had the privilege of thanking them for their service, their ongoing service, on behalf of the Mayor and Council and the full community. I pointed out some evidence, well, they were, a number of them were in the parade with equipment, apparatus. They were getting lots of cheers and atta boys and atta girls and a lot of appreciation. And I think, folks, it's great for our employees to receive that, but it's also important that the public is reminded, these are the folks where literally the rubber meets the rope, and they get, they get the job done on essential services for us. The other item is a staff shout-out. It's from the Police Department. Sergeant Mark Elfafel proudly represented the Tacoma Park Police Department at the 2025 Special Olympics Maryland Summer Games, held at Towson University, June 20th through the 22nd. Over the course of the three-day event, incredible athletes showcased their talents and determination. Sergeant Elfafel was honored to run alongside several of these inspiring athletes during the opening ceremony, carrying the flame of hope to light the cauldron. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Dispirito. We're going to move into our first work session this evening, the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. With that, I will turn things to Director Chung.
Mayor, council, council members. I'm going to give a summary of our fiscal year FY26 first budget amendment. Our budget 2026 was adopted by the council on May 14, 2025. However, due to delays in certain expenditures initially planned and budgeted for fiscal year 25, a budget amendment is now necessary to reappropriate. We usually term that as a carryover, but the appropriate term should be reappropriate funds for these purposes. Reappropriate funds will enable the council-approved projects initiated and/or planned in fiscal year 25 to be completed in fiscal year 26. As funding for these projects was unspent from fiscal year 25, therefore, the unassigned reserve end of the year balance is estimated to be higher by the corresponding amount. As a result, there is no expected net impact to the FY26 budget. I will start with the general fund. The total reappropriation for the departmental operating budget and the capital improvement budget amount is $1,369,000. And please note that the amendment does not include any new FY26 budget increase in the general fund. And the most significant reappropriate increase includes $310,000 for incomplete EV charging green homes and program outreach in the Sustainable Division of the Public Works. $675,000 for library construction contingency fund and the library software. And then the last item, which is significant, is $144,675 for incomplete HVAC control system. And these are all the items included in the $1.3 million in the general fund for reappropriation. In the Red Light Camera Fund, a budget increase of $193,575 is requested to reflect the restructuring of the Exxon contract from a one-year agreement to a five-year term agreement. So it's a bundle agreement, that's why there's cost increase. Therefore, it's requiring a budget increase in the Red Light Camera Fund. In the Special Revenue Fund, the net reappropriation is about $1.3 million, which include an additional $178,000 budget increase due to new grant awards. The significant reappropriation include, first item is about $1 million for the cable grant library construction due to project delay. Second item is $125,000 state grant library construction grant. The third item is $145,000 unused funds due to the dyers' replacement and media lab project delay. So these are the significant reappropriation in the Special Revenue Fund. In terms of the American Rescue Plan Act Opera Fund, the total Opera reappropriation in this amendment is $963,000, which includes $133,000 for contract administered by the City Manager's Office, Human Resources, and the Housing and Community Development. The second item is the Red Light Camera Contract in the amount of $392,000. And the third one is multi-family housing rehabilitation project carried over from fiscal year 25, and the total amount is $267,000. Lastly, is the Stormwater Fund. We have a total of $255,851 is being reappropriated to cover the project cost carryover from fiscal year 25 Stormwater Fund in a separate ordinance. So we have two ordinance. One is the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund Opera Fund, and also the Red Light Camera Fund. And now the separate ordinance is for the Stormwater alone. So when we are looking at the last page of our covering memo, we noticed that there is a chart there that's showing the adopted budget amount, the first budget amendment increase, and then there is a net adjusted balance. So we can tell from the chart that there is no budget amendment increase in the first budget amendment of fiscal year 26. At the time of the 26 budget was adopted, the general fund unassigned reserve was $5.4 million. Unassigned reserve ratio was 17%, and the total estimated fund balance was $16.2 million. and the total estimated fund balance was $16.2 million. There is no budget increase in the first budget amendment. Therefore, the net adjusted budget balance is the same as the adopted budget. And I'm happy to address any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And sorry, my brain may not be working as fast as it normally is. So I think one thing that kind of got me a little tripped up with this, and it would be helpful for you to explain. So because it seemed like we're moving quite a few dollars around in some of our special, like with the stormwater budget and the like. And so I was surprised to see that our budget didn't change, right? So because it just seemed like there was a lot of movement that was happening. So is it just the general fund that ultimately we're showing that there was no change in the expenditures? But there's... I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear because I just see all of these ARPA dollars moving around. And but then when I saw the final table and everything was balanced, that seemed a little off to me.
Yeah, it's a little bit confusing because in the first budget amendment, we normally have a lot of the reappropriation, which we usually call it carryover from the previous year to this fiscal year. And in order to, for us to be clear about what other items belong to reappropriation and what other items belong to budget increase, I highlighted in the budget table, anyone with a salmon color is the budget increase items. Anything without the coloring, which is blank and white in color, that means they are budget reappropriation. That does not affect the fund balance. And in terms of the table at the end of the covering sheet, that table is only for general fund. So for general fund itself, we do not have any budget increase, but we do have $1.3 million of reappropriation money carried from the fiscal year '25 to '26.
Okay.
So it's, I think the important thing to note is that it's a net budget is what's being measured in the final page. If we were looking at the gross adjusted budget, we would see an increase. So it would go from $34 million in expenditures plus all of the carryover. So this particular chart, which I think Director Chung, was a request from Council specifically to show increases. We've defined, if you see the note under that chart, what we mean by net adjusted budget. So net adjusted budget reflects changes to the adopted budget due to new or current year increases only. So any carryover, that's excluded explicitly from the definition. So again, if this was a chart intended to show gross increases, you would see the corresponding adjustment that I think you're expecting to see, Mayor, which is the added number of carryovers, which would result in a larger total number of expenditures. The other thing to keep in mind, and this was attempted to be fleshed out in the first paragraph, where we're talking about what is going to fund those carryovers. It's, of course, unspent dollars in '25. So in theory, what we should see is a part of the transition from FY '25 to '26 is an increase in unassigned reserve that corresponds with the carryover dollars that we are asking to spend in FY '26. And so the additional expenditures in '26 are, in a way, and in practice, actually accounted for already. So there's tax capacity to pay for it. And so we're not expecting to see, as a result of the transfer of unassigned reserves, we're not expecting to see any net changes in the unassigned reserve. The net change in unassigned reserve is going to be zero because the extra dollars are paid for from existing dollars just from the previous year.
Got it. Thank you. Got it. Now I see a bunch of hands. Councilmember Landman.
Just to clarify, the other, the budget expenditure increases beyond the ones that you were just talking about, which are the carryover ones, they're all accounted for by grant funds? Did I understand that correctly?
Right. So any increase is, and again, this chart specifically shows general fund increases. So there are increases in other funds. This chart shows general funds, so you don't see any increases identified in a way that Councilmember, excuse me, Director Chung stated. If we were showing the entire budget, including special revenue, which is where our grant funds are, you would see those increases highlighted here.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Hansett.
I think just a quick question. That was a very helpful explanation, Deputy. And thank you, Director Chung, too, but just in that particular point that you were asking about. So perhaps this is a little bit of a misplaced question because it's not directly for you, but do you have any concerns at all then about being able to spend in the coming fiscal year the additional unassigned revenue that wasn't spent in the last year since it's not showing in the gross budget chart here? I mean, typically, if you were to carry over a large sum of money into the next fiscal year, you might have concerns about whether or not you could really manage that larger amount of workload and budget. I mean, I'm assuming the answer is no, but I just, if you could just talk us through that just for a second.
Yeah, the quick answer is every year we have dollars that are not spent because of changes to our expected ability to execute a project or an initiative. So we more than likely will continue that habit for the foreseeable future. So in FY '26, we expect to have, at the end of FY '26, projects that don't move forward for a number of reasons. So I think, to answer your question, we, I wouldn't call them challenges that we would expect in trying to spend the money, but there will be circumstances that prevent us from spending the money.
Can I maybe ask that? I'm just thinking through this now that I'm doing this for the third year and I'm seeing how we're changing, looking at the numbers, too. I'm thinking, I would love to see at some point how that amount of unassigned reserve that is carried over each year looks from year to year to see the degree to which that number is changing. And I wonder if you just happen to have a sense of that in your mind over the last several years, whether it tends to be around the same? Because we went, you know, we went from a kind of a similar budget that just increased with inflation over the years to a jump with the ARPA funds of a substantial leap, really, and then big capital projects. And now we're kind of, you know, tapering back down again to something that's getting to be, going to be soon, more what we're used to. But that carryover number is a really important number because often, when you have a lot more money, you really need more human capacity to make the money get spent. And so, and while we did amp up some of our capacity, we've also been suffering, you know, from not having adequate LOE. I mean, we had Andrew managing the ARPA funds, and then he was supposed to get some more staff, too. And it's been challenging, I know, for your entire staff. So do you have a sense of that number over time?
Yeah, it's absolutely typical for a local government to have an execution rate below 100. Ours is about 85%. And that, we have been studying that, I think, more recently. I'd say the last three or four years. In fact, the financial consultant that we utilized about four years ago now, I think.
Three years ago, Rev. Talis.
They aided us in identifying what our execution rate is. And if you recall, in the FY '26 budget, for the first time, we tried to account for our execution rate by including a number that was basically a deduction from our overall expenses. And that does, to your point, give us, or I guess adjacent to your point, that does help us more accurately account for the level of revenues that we will need in that fiscal year. So, and I think the only thing I'll add is that it is seemingly relatively consistent, that 85% execution rate.
That's really, really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, I just, thank you. I had a couple of questions. So I understand that we're not talking about a change in the amount of money, but another aspect of the Council making a budget is making sure to set priorities. That what we're spending the money on is our priority. So are there, my first question is, are there any changes that we're looking at here that are unexpectedly diverging from what the Council set out to ask to accomplish for '26?
So the budget for FY '25 was approved by Council. And so anything in that budget, you all have signed off on. Any reallocation would be continuations of those programs or initiatives. So because we aren't adding anything new, I can say definitively that, yes, it's a continuation of Council's priorities in FY '26.
Thank you. I just, it's important to have that confirmed. I appreciate that. My other question was about the Exxon additional increase,
$190,000.
$193,000. And it was just a few weeks ago that we had a kind of extended session asking about that contract and what its ramifications would be. And there was a discussion of how the bundling would result in about $400,000 in savings, but never at that time did we hear that it would be an upfront additional cost. And I just wondered, at what point in the, this came after we approved a budget, but at what point in the negotiations with Exxon was that starting to become clear that there could be an upfront expense that would be more for this coming year?
This particular budget increase was a request by the Police Department after they reviewed the FY '26 budget that this Exxon contract was not included in the original adopted budget. So that's why they needed to have that amount increase. So why they are asking for the increase now, the more detailed information, we need to, you know, double-check with the Police Department.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to ask that we get that double-checked because we don't want to be surprised, I don't think, by these kinds of expenses. Thank you.
Right. And it would be helpful, just because it's late. I've worked a lot today, but I want to make sure I'm confirming my memory that one of the things, too, was that because of the bundling, we were renewing, I thought, early, which might have caused us to have to go ahead and pay for the renewal contract outside of the typical cycle because we could get a lower rate. So it's not necessarily that we are overall increasing. We're increasing the budget because we have to pay for it now. We weren't accounting for having to pay for it now. But over time, the cost savings would pan out. So it would be helpful if we could just confirm that with the chief because I think it's a matter of the timing of renewal, which wasn't included in the budget versus, you know, people just forgetting that we needed body cameras.
Yeah. I will check with the chief about this particular budget increase.
Madam Mayor, I believe that had a component of this was that we were piggybacking on a Montgomery County wide contract, and the timing was, in some respect, dependent on that.
Yeah, I think it was a matter of timing. But we can just triple-check that. Okay. All right. Not seeing any more lights? Unless the City Manager has a comment?
Yeah, the chief is here, and he's on his way over to answer that question and provide a little more information for you on that. He should be here in just a moment. If you want, if you'd like to get a little more information about that.
Wait a minute. Let's see. Maybe he's walking past. I don't know.
Well, in the meantime, I want to give some more additional information about the budget amendment in our first reading. I just received information from three different departments. There will be some changes to our reappropriated amount, and that shows up in this budget amendment. And these three amounts, including the first item is, and that will be reflected in the first reading. The first amount is the reappropriation increase to cover the ongoing contract service with the human circuit for the service period from May 2025 through May 2026. And the increased amount is provided by the Communications Department, and the amount is $40,750. And that will be reflected in the first reading. The second change, it will be the reduction of the reappropriation of the amount $15,000. And the reduce is due to the vendor payment for library construction is expected to be made in fiscal year '25. Since we pay in '25, that's why we're reducing the appropriation amount. The third item is the reduction of $36,168 due to the receipt of invoice for work completed in June 2025. And the funds were expanded in 2025. That's why we cannot, we are not going to carry over that amount to '26. Therefore, there is a reduction. So two reduction amount and one increase amount, and that will be reflected in the fiscal year, in the first reading of the budget amendment.
Okay. Well, Chief, you did walk fast.
All right. Let me catch my breath. So I think what Susan said is correct. So the red light camera contract was originally under the speed camera contract. When we eliminated the speed camera line, somehow the payment for that contract was deleted as well. So there's not additional cost. It was just never budgeted because of the moving from the red light contract, which was in speed camera, to the red light camera. But it never got calculated to move to red light camera. Does that make sense?
It does. Okay. Nope, that's helpful. It was just a technical thing. Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move to the next item for tonight. Board and Committee Appointment Recommendations. So our sub, our working group on committees.
I am looking to, oh, I guess, yes, Roger. Roger, or Councilmember Schlegel and I didn't get a chance to touch base just today since he was out. Do I have your permission to speak on our behalf from both of you? I'll look to you for nod.
You do. I simply had no internet at all for the last four days.
No worries. No worries at all. We did have a power meeting, I will share, recently for about three hours along with Jesse Carpenter and Irma. So thank you.
And I was there for that. I was there for that.
Yes, exactly. You were there for that. So that's the part that counts. Okay, so in short, we just reviewed 19 applications for reappointment and 11 applications for new applicants during this recruitment cycle. And we had two applications that were received from non-city residents. Non-city residents are not allowed on all of our committees, but they are allowed on the Arts and Humanities Committee. And I think you all know, but since some of you are still newer, the criteria are listed here. These criteria were decided upon by a prior Council, prior to my joining Council as well, three years ago. I think we continue to think that they are serving us well. They include residency and other individual committee requirements, an expression of interest from residents, technical expertise and/or lived experience, organization and community affiliation. We have a diversity and inclusion criteria, including age, race, and ethnicity, gender, and ward diversity. And then we look at their different, the different contributions that individuals can make to the group, such as their skills, their lived experience, their teamwork, and their perspective. And in 2021, as I just referenced, there were changes made to city committee scopes and membership that were designed to increase effectiveness and efficiency, attract new members from our community, and employ... attract new members from our community, and employ innovative ways to engage our residents who tend to be harder to reach. I'm going to speak to that in just a moment. But if you'll go ahead and flip to the next page and see the recommendations that we've made, I'll just ask the mayor, shall I go ahead and read these out? There are quite a few names. We are ready to do that as a committee, but I don't know whether that's necessary.
I cannot recall.
Quite a, it's a lot of names.
They are posted on the website.
So I don't think we need to read them.
Okay, I'm going to let everybody, you know, take a look at these. We're not voting on them right away, right? That's right. So I physically will not be here to look at each of you in the eye, but I do invite you to ask any one of us any questions that you might have, having looked at this list freshly. We did review this list, but I'm not sure how long you've had to look over it. I think a few things that I want to draw your attention to. I actually, once again, so a year ago, and I haven't shared this even fully yet with my colleagues. Six months ago, when all of my new council members joined me, I spent a number of hours creating tables and charts for myself because I was really quite curious about what kind of progress we'd made on some of the criteria that we set out to achieve in full. And I went ahead and got really interested in the data again today and dug through it. And I can't speak to exactly what it looked like, you know, more than a year ago. But I can say that I asked for this data from Ms. Carpenter prior to a year ago. And we could see clear progress in terms of racial equity, ward diversity, et cetera, based on the new policies that the council had adopted. For example, you know, really making this intentional, this effort, looking over these criteria, I think focusing on recruitment efforts and doubling down on that, looking at a bi-annual, you know, every semi-annual review of applications, and as well as offering a stipend, right? So we saw some improvements, but what I am seeing now is really quite interesting. I think committee to committee, we can see there's a little bit of, we're able to look at each one and say, oh, we don't have as many men on this committee. We don't have as many women. We don't have as much age distribution in this area. Or we don't have this kind of experience yet, and look what this person brings. We are getting about approximately the same number of applicants as we have openings, or we're still not having enough applicants, I would say. Occasionally, we're having one committee that's really popular. The Sustainability Committee is ending up with more applicants than we have spaces for sometimes. And occasionally, people will put a second or third choice for their committee. And then we're able to suggest to them, hey, you know, you could go on this committee, but we actually don't have enough spaces. What about your second choice? So, you know, there's a few people, mostly the Sustainability Committee, we're not able to offer that person right away, or they don't have a second choice. But what I thought was perhaps more interesting to me anyway was looking at racial equity across all of our committees writ large across the community. And I'm just going to share with you, I didn't put it in a huge painful table because I remember how that was received last time. So I'm going to try to just share with you some big highlights. So I think, I don't know if I have the perfect data in front of me, but our general demographic says a city, since our population hasn't changed that much, nor has our composition for a number of years. In 2020, we had our city, our city, I'm just talking about our city, not our committees, was about 42% white, non-Hispanic. Okay, so imagine that, 42%. And I'll go, I'll just jump to the committees. The committees have hovered around 60% plus white. Okay? That's looking at a year ago. It's looking at today as well. And I'll get into that in just a second. And then our city is about 16% Hispanic. We have one, a year ago, one Hispanic resident on our committees that identifies Hispanic. Okay? There's a lot to be said there. We have 31% blacks in our city. Our committees are hovering between 14% and 17% black composition. And we have about 5% Asian population in our city. Our committees are hovering around 7% Asian. And then, you know, there's this whole other category, which I wasn't able to break down, which is somewhere between six, around 6% in our city and between 6 and 15% on our committee. So that could be a lot of different things. But I think what I want to point out here are just a few things. We had some choices to make, and one of them, I thought, was an interesting choice that we did make this cycle, which we didn't have to make six months ago, which was, we ended up saying yes to a number of residents who were white that applied on this particular round. And so we've got, so for example, we started at 37, 37 absolute, this may be going to go too deep. Okay. We started, we went up by about 10 residents this time in terms of the number of white residents that joined all of our committees. We could have said no, you know, to some of these folks and said, we're going to leave those spaces vacant. And I think that this group, what we're recommending to you at this point in time is that we've got people who want to volunteer their time in our community. We don't have enough diversity yet represented across our community as we might like. But for the moment, we're recommending that we proceed with filling the vacancies and making sure that we're promoting, you know, volunteerism and participation in our local government at this moment in time. And each of these will, you know, their terms will expire, and then we'll have another opportunity, you know, to go out and recruit. We are still continuing to struggle with reaching our very hard-to-reach Latino residents, and I really want to point that out to all of my colleagues because it's going to take effort in collaboration with our communications department, in collaboration with each of you to really say, hey, do I have some Latino residents that might be interested in volunteering? Our city could really, you know, could really use their knowledge of this community, sub-community. And I think, and then I looked at retention issues too, and I thought maybe it could be a retention issue, which could be suggestive of people not feeling comfortable in these groups too, which we have speculated about. But I will say that what I found there was, you can see the retention rate from, at least within the last year. You can see, we've recruited, we've admitted people, and then over the course of the year, and Jesse would have further insight of this, but just in the last two rounds, you can see that we started higher, like at 72 overall, and then we moved down to 60 something by the time that we're here advising you to recruit again. So, and again, that's pretty evenly spread across the racial groups, so that's good. You know, we're not seeing an unusual pattern there that people of a certain demographic, for example, are, you know, falling out of the groups. Again, only one year of data. But I thought that my colleagues would find this data really valuable. And what I want to offer to you is, because I've gone deep on the data, if you would like to look for your specific ward, kind of, who's on these committees? What do they bring to the table? I invite you to come to me, and I'll talk you through it a little bit to see how you might want to go out and look for, within your wards, you know, what's going to help some of these committees to be more representative of our entire community, not just based on race, but also on gender, on age, distribution, et cetera. So sorry, I talked a little bit long, but I hope that that's really useful because this is a really important race inequity. I can't imagine a more important priority in today's world.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hansak, and thank you to the working group on committees. This has been really helpful information, and thank you all for doing the deeper dive. Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, I just, this was another conversation that we were having in our subcommittee, and I would, I hope it's okay, Councilmember Hansak, me to mention it. We've been talking about how it could be related to, it could affect retention or it could affect resident interest in serving on committees. The lack of a routine for committees reporting out to the council. And I think we've discussed this before, but I wanted to mention again that we've been kind of talking, Councilmember Hansak, Councilmember Gilbert and I, about the potential value of having a set calendar schedule for committees to come and just tell us what they've been doing, just so they know that their work matters and we're interested in hearing about it.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. And I know that I've been talking to the city clerk about that as well, trying to schedule each of the committees to come before the council. So that is something that we're actively trying to work on. Any other points of, Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to add really quickly that for me, it was, one of the things that was most important was the equitable way that we advertised. And I think going forward, that's more important than, right now, we know it's going to take a minute before we get those numbers up and we can get the diversity that we want. So that was important, as well as I wanted to mention that I scheduled a meeting with the chief, and we're soon going to be talking about the noise board and ways that we can hopefully move forward with that and possibly either get the police department involved or continue with the two-party noise complaints and continue with the noise board.
Thank you. Okay, awesome. Well, thank you all again. And just as a reminder, these appointments will come back before the council next week for a vote. And so, I'm sorry, city clerk?
Yes, may I add one thing? The group did not have a chance to look at the applicants for the council compensation committee. But the deadline was extended to allow additional recruitment to take place, and there are indeed more applications. So what I've done on the rolling agenda is added appointment recommendations for a week from tonight, assuming that the committee, it pretty much has to happen that way. It would be, so next week, report out recommendations and then have a vote on the, at the last meeting.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. So on the rolling, we have the voting on the other appointments next week, work session on the council compensation, and then voting on the 30th for the council compensation. Okay, so that's correct. All right. Okay, perfect. All right. Seeing no more lights on this matter, we're going to move to our last work session of the evening, which is the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Follow-up. Yes, I need a break. Thank you, Council, because I was going to try to tough it out, and I don't think I can. All right, so while we get set up for the next presentation, if folks are okay for us to take a quick, I'll just make it a 10-minute break. folks are okay for us to take a quick, uh, I'll just make it a 10-minute break. Thank you. All right. Thank you all so much for allowing us to take a little bit of a break. Um, we are reconvening tonight's meeting with the work session, update and review of the reimagining Public Safety Task Force. Phase one was last week where you recall that we walked through those items that staff had deemed completed or no further action and received some timely and valuable feedback from the council. The presentation you have before you represents some of the adjustments that council made last time as well as some comments and for some additional information. So some things are, are further presented here, even though we're not going back over the completed items, you will see nevertheless in the appendix, basically that you were resupplied with the entire presentation, phase one and phase two. Phase one, we went back and made adjustments that do reflect the feedback we got last week. But this evening, the focus is on items, rather than completed, items that are in progress or require mayor and council discussion and direction. That's the focus. In progress and require mayor and council discussion and direction. There are approximately nine slides, but what I'd like to do is walk through those as I did in the format last week. Allow to, if it's your pleasure, to allow me to walk through these nine slides and then we can circle back to any and all of them with your questions, comments and, and direction. And I know since these are items that particularly, there's a number here that would require mayor and council discussion and direction, we'll certainly be going back to those. Okay. And just from a format standpoint, I'll remind the council and the public that the, um, what you're seeing on the screen, on the columns with the numbers, R, pound sign stands for recommendation number. That corresponds with the original task force report that was issued in July of 2021 by the citizen task force. So those are the recommendation numbers under R and under P, that stands for page, page and, uh, page number. So that's a cross-reference. You'll see both the recommendation number and which page on the original task force report that these items correspond to. And we have, for the public's benefit, both this presentation as well as the original report are available on the website and through the meeting agenda link for tonight. So starting off like, and we also, just to remind, we have a number of different themes that the mayor and council had, uh, had, had its last update several years ago, had organized the subject matter around. This first one, this first theme that we'll address is community engagement and education. The recommendation, and this is an item that is in progress as, as we estimate it, improve the structure and content of city and police department website to foster accessibility to relevant information by community members. The status is that the city implemented a new website in 2025. The new user-friendly website has more content and language interpretation. Next steps, staff will continue to explore additional ways to strengthen communications and outreach, including email alert, social media, neighborhood platforms and so on, and explore new methods to reach residents with limited access, such as non-digital, those with language barriers and so on. The next step and the status also apply to this second recommendation, recommendation number 10, which was, strengthen the existing methods of communication, email alert, social media, neighborhood platforms, and explore new methods with residents with limited internet access, those that are non-digital, with other information access difficulty such as language barrier. So this is presented as an in-progress. We continue to continuously work on these, on these various ways to address this. Recommendation 14, this is also in progress. This is under the theme of also community engagement and education. The recommendation 14 was support for implementing either non-emergency call services or new call-taking and dispatching protocols to divert 911 calls to non-police services if appropriate. If an alternative to 911 is created, the city should promote community engagement and outreach to increase awareness and the use of a new number, a non-911, uh, number or process. The status is that the 988 number is a national mental health crisis number. The city has actively promoted 988. Processing mental health calls through our dispatch center and 911 is being evaluated, which is related to the city's mental health pilot program and that the city launched in collaboration with Montgomery County. I will bring council's attention to the memorandum that you received on Monday, this July 14th, from Deputy City Manager Asmaa Hapti. That was an update on staff's attempt to secure with the county, the second mental health clinician that has been part of the overall pilot plan. Just briefly, what Asmaa said, and for the public's benefit, city staff has been working with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services on the recruitment and hiring of a second clinician. We have been notified by county staff that the second clinician has been hired and will start on July 28th and join the city at Tacoma Park two days later, following her county training on July 30th. City staff participated in interviewing this candidate and she was unanimously selected by county and city staff as the best candidate for the position. Relatedly, myself, Chief Tavall, and Deputy City Manager Hopti, met with county executive staff last Wednesday and had a great discussion on the next steps with regards to the pilot MOU. The MOU extension is, um, is awaiting the county's execution. Beyond the June 2026, beyond June 2026, county and city staff will coordinate and collaborate to structure an MOU as originally envisioned. It was recommended that the mayor and council may wish to reach out to the members of the County Council Committee on Health and Human Services and advocate for the funding to continue the program beyond December 2026, which is when the ARPA funds, which currently fund the two positions runs out. The county's FY27 budget process starts in or around October. So March of 2026 would be a opportune time to reach out to the committee. We could do it even earlier, such as this fall. And she provides some additional information, but council has in receipt of that memorandum, that's a bit of an update on the MOU. Next steps, in addition to that, staff will evaluate calls to the dispatch and 911 center and develop processes for implementation and develop an outreach plan. Recommendation 19, provide clear communication of policing priorities on allocating policing resources to serious criminal activities with a focus on community engagement in investigating serious crimes. The status is that the 2017 council resolution setting police priorities was scheduled for council discussion on May 28th, 2021, but was not ultimately discussed. Mayor and council will be discussing this item, however, again, next week on July 23rd and also on July 30th. And next steps would, this would ultimately require some mayor and council discussion and direction. We're still under community engagement and education. This is one where we're recommending further review and discussion. The recommendation one was establish a permanent civilian-staffed volunteer Tacoma Park Public Safety Task Force to ensure a community standing committee monitors progress in implementing these recommendations and develops new recommendations following review of future practices. The status is, further discussion is required to evaluate if a task force reporting to the council is needed. And the next step would be for the mayor and council to discuss this and ultimately provide direction regarding the establishment of a task force. Under the theme of new and expanded programs, recommendation number 39, invest in additional scholarships for job training programs for Tacoma residents who are un- or underemployed or who are re-entering the community after release from incarceration to address the true root causes of crime. For those under or underemployed, this is the status, WorkSource Montgomery is a resource. Those re-entering the community, the Montgomery County Correctional Facility Reentry Services Unit facilitates many collaborative activities to provide offender opportunities for successful transition from incarceration back to the community. And next steps, we would continue to work to refer residents to appropriate resources. Recommendation number 40, create a Tacoma Park mentorship program to expose students to new opportunities and realities and expose both mentors and students to new cultural backgrounds and frames of reference. The status is that staff is seeking partnerships with service providers and businesses for its summer youth programs. Staff has been engaged, been engaging youth and teens in the form of mentoring to include life skills and socio-emotional skills. Next steps, Recreation Department Teens Coordinator will focus on connecting with teens and young adults ages 17 to 24 and provide developmental and skill-building opportunities. Still under new and expanded programs in progress, recommendation 48, offer courses that allow Tacoma Park residents and staff to learn about the breadth of identities in Tacoma Park, enhance cultural competency and anti-racism practices, explore the cultural diversity of Tacoma Park through fostering conversations and team-building scenarios, and provide communities with divergent backgrounds a vehicle to explore their commonalities and shared humanity. Status is, in 2021, the city hosted the Tacoma Park Equity Walk, designed to challenge community members to explore equity by examining who we are and what makes us feel valued and included. The program was funded with a grant from America Walks, Inc. Next steps, potentially explore other organizations such as GARE and funding resources to continue to host such trainings. Under the theme of policing policies, recommendation three, and this we consider, these we consider in progress, establish a 24-hour line and an online system where residents can request a non-armed police response. The status is that a national 24-hour hotline, 988, is available. Calls are answered by experienced mental health specialists 24 hours a day. Next steps, continue to work with our county partner to fully implement the mental health pilot program. Recommendation number four, train 911 dispatchers and establish protocols to refer mental health emergencies and other non-police calls to non-police resources. The status is, the goal of the pilot is to establish response protocols that will route mental health-related service calls to clinicians via the pilot program rather than to police officers. Next steps, continue to collaborate with the county to seek external funding to sustain this program here in Tacoma Park. Recommendation number 25, quantify instances where officers attempted to use and successfully used de-escalation techniques and create an award or bonus to incentivize de-escalation and crisis avoidance. The status is, the city is working towards the relaunch of the employee evaluation system. The police department looks to incorporate a de-escalation process and crisis avoidance into its evaluation matrix. Next steps, continue to develop and hone the citywide evaluation matrix for a relaunch of a citywide employee evaluation system. of a citywide employee evaluation system. Policing policies in progress continued. Recommendation 28, continue efforts to create and/or strengthen mutual aid agreements. The status, there are existing memorandums of understanding with Montgomery County and Park Police. Next steps, staff is working with other Maryland jurisdictions to attempt to obtain multi-jurisdictional MOUs with DC, the District of Columbia. Recommendation 29, review and update cross-jurisdictional coordination protocols for incidents and encourage joint training. The status is, the city has existing protocols with various jurisdictions to respond to in-progress cross-jurisdictional incidents. City also engages in joint training with various allied jurisdictions. Next steps would be to continue to collaborate with local jurisdictions in this manner. Recommendation 50, the mayor and council should review practices related to the use of civil asset forfeiture. Status, police department will provide a written overview of the city's civil asset forfeiture policy for mayor and council review. Next steps, mayor and council to advise the city manager on the next steps following staff submission of this draft policy for consideration. Theme, city organizational structure and training, items in progress. Recommendation 5, city resource coordinator to coordinate community activities, groups, and neighborhoods. The status is, the city staff is exploring initiatives such as community connectors and other partnerships to assist with and implement this recommendation. And I will note that mayor and council has in receipt of a memorandum from yesterday, the 15th, from Ryan Kelly, who had provided a overview of the community connectors, basically an update on the community connectors topic, ultimately suggesting a work session with the mayor and council at a future date so that you can consider the options that are provided by staff in this memo and have an opportunity to provide direction to staff. So, next steps, identify partners. The city recently submitted an application to the National Legal Cities Community Engagement Academy. If the city is selected for the program, city staff and community organizations will benefit from training on community organizing, information dissemination, and networking as part of the city efforts to implement a community connector program designed to increase community outreach and engagement. Recommendation number 8, provide training and update protocols to ensure sensitivity, cultural competency, and fairness in official statements released by the city. The status is that the police department has provided a number of trainings for its communications team, and mayor and council is in receipt of a memorandum also, in this case. Well, I'm not entirely sure it's been forwarded. I can make sure that we can. We, there was too much information to provide here just on the screen, but we'll make sure that that's available, and we'll, we'll have all of these things publicly posted. But there's a, Chief DeValle provided a memorandum with examples of four major trainings that our police public information officer, Kathy Plevey, has attended on this subject. Next steps, staff regularly reviews policies and procedures for continued improvement. Staff is also exploring various training and professional development opportunities for its communications staff. And below on the screen here are some examples of targeted training courses through various providers, including the Public Relations Society of America, Inc., and that's, there's And I believe this is the last, last slide. Theme, city organizational structure and training. This is listed for further review and discussion. Recommendation number 16, the Tacoma Park City Council shall pass a resolution stating that the city of Tacoma Park supports the right of all Tacoma Park employees to have access to confidential mental health, stress management, and/or peer support services without fear of retaliation. The status is that all city staff has access to our 24/7 employee assistance program, and we provide a link that will provide additional information. This provides confidential mental health counseling and support. Next steps, direction from the mayor and council on whether or not it wants to consider a resolution to reinforce the city's mental health resources available to all city employees. And recommendation 17, explore the viability of rental housing subsidies and programs to ensure that police officers can live in Tacoma Park. The status is, this is part of the city's Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And next steps, mayor and council discussion and direction to staff. And I will note that some, Devin had shared with me, Devin McNally, our HCD director, that a number of private, private housing property owners do provide rental discounts for active members of the police department or any police department, law enforcement officers in, as, as an incentive to live there. That is something done by the private sector, and certainly we welcome and applaud that type of partnership with us, and I think that's a kind of a win-win situation for the officers and the, and the building. So, at this point, again, I'll mention that we have available all of the presentation, including those from last week, if there's anything that you, if it's necessary to go back to any of that, but otherwise, staff is pleased to listen to comments, discussion, and ultimately, any direction the mayor and council wishes, wishes to provide on this subject.
Great. Thank you very much, City Manager Dispirito. And recognizing that we have a couple of council members that are virtual, a couple quick points. So, for item number 19 on slide three, so, we did have a work session to start discussing the policing priorities, but I think that, yeah, so, I think the, the policing priorities or the resolution update was put on hold for us to have these conversations, and so the upcoming work sessions are going to be focused more on identifying the work plan for the council to send clear direction to staff about the items that are contained in the report that we want to continue to work towards, not necessarily to work on that individual resolution. The idea being, once we have some clear understanding of where we stand with the other recommendations, the council would, in the fall, pick up, reconvening, having conversations around our priorities for the police department. So, I think that's, that's one thing that we do, that we will need to update in terms of the status. It would be helpful for me to get a little bit of thoughts, and maybe this is a point of discussion for council, regarding the public safety, the Standing Committee on, with the purpose of monitoring progress and implementing these recommendations and developing new recommendations following review of future practices. It might be helpful for our subcommittees, on committees, to maybe take this, I think I might have mentioned this, but take this up as a point to kind of help facilitate council discussion about, because after hearing what Councilmember Hansak shared and recognizing that we often have difficulties with recruitment, and I'm also very big on not establishing a Standing Committee unless there is something worth having them stand for, the question came to me about where we would likely be after this exercise in terms of council determining which items we feel is, that there's been enough work done, and so we consider them complete for the purpose of the council, and then which items are things that need to be done, that the council will be developing the resolution, solidifying the work plan, and kind of setting that stage. So, then what would be remaining for a Standing Committee to do was the question that I, I raised. I mean, I think, I don't want to immediately just say, no, let's, we don't need this recommendation, but I, I think it warrants discussion, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what a Standing Committee would ultimately be left to do if included as part of the work plan. Council, I think, Councilmember Landman.
Maybe could I speak to that issue in particular? So, I think that, that there are a couple of relatively specialized topics that might remain after this round of recommendations are implemented. The two that come to mind that I think we might want to recruit people with specialized knowledge for something that when we talked about this and that, when we talked about committees and, and boards earlier, we talked about maybe the format might be for something more like a task force than a Standing Committee. One is this issue that we talked about last week, which is the data that are collected and its security and protection from being, you know, swept up by, you know, ICE or the federal government in ways that we may not have foreseen or wanted, and, and data privacy and security. And there may be people in our community who could serve on a task force like that, who may have absolutely no interest in, say, for example, mental health, and we might try and form a, a task force to look into that for us and with us. And then, and they might work with, say, our IT team and our police to look into that, and then they would, you know, when we turn to mental health issues, they might say, thank you, not interested. And then we do have some members of the community that have already been working with us specifically on the mental health clinicians. They have a different skill set, different contacts, and I think they would very much welcome the opportunity to serve on a task force to help us continue to implement and advocate for the mental health clinician program to be carried forward, to be funded, to be, you know, liaised with and, and function with the, the county committee, and I think it would be helpful to us to have a task force to help make that happen. That's been devoted to making that an effective program. So, those are examples where those would be in, in the form of a task force and not sort of a generalized, you know, policing function. So, I think it's something we should look at with, with particularized things we're trying to accomplish that are major, that were major outcomes of this effort that are kind of about different specific things we still want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hansak, did you, okay.
Yeah, I think you, you raise a good point, Councilmember Landman, about when we get to the point where we're actually starting to think through what warrants a task force and what doesn't. I, I would say a, a task force for advocacy is not, is not necessarily what we would need if, so, from the mental health perspective, if it's just a matter of trying to make sure that we're advocating the county, that we're, we're pulling together resources, we wouldn't need a task force for that. But if it were, hey, we're trying to think through how to better, not just leverage our mental health counselors, but trying to address broad, more broadly in the community mental health needs and leveraging resources across different sectors and trying to develop a comprehensive strategy for addressing mental health service needs in the community that might include the clinician community, nonprofits, what our police department is doing and the like, and we're bringing folks together for that purpose, that would make sense to me for a task force. It would go beyond what I think the intent was here, but that would make more, to me, more sense for the top, as a task force idea. But I, I just wanted to kind of drop that nugget, because we're going to continue to have these types of conversations in terms of how we want to deal with the, this particular task force recommendation, which is one that I think falls squarely in the council's lap in terms of addressing. There was a couple of other places where it seemed a little, in some places, I can ask offline just to see if we could get a better idea on what the timeline is, but for item number 29, the review and update cross-jurisdictional coordination protocols for incidents and encourage joint training, and we say that our goal is to continue to collaborate with local jurisdictions. I guess my, my question on that one is, and I hate to say this, but when are we going to be done? Because the, the, the recommendation read a little bit more concrete in terms of reviewing and updating protocols and developing that, a joint training plan. So, have we, it says we have existing protocols. Has there been any adjustments as or as after the release of this report? Oh, I can turn you on, hold on one second. There you go.
I think it goes back to the question with a lot of these recommendations, is are they ongoing or are they completed? As a result of the task force, we again reviewed all of our inter-jurisdictional protocols. We do continuous training with all of our allied partners. We sponsor training where they come in here and work with us. We go to their training. All of our officers are trained through the Montgomery County Police Academy. We've had joint enforcement actions. Recently, we had a joint enforcement action with the District of Columbia and Prince George County along New Hampshire Avenue. So, we have these protocols in place, so this could, this could fall into the completed category if you're reading it as such, because we did review the protocols, and, and to be, to be candid, we work very well with our allied partners. And the, the main concern that we had, if we're talking about cross-jurisdictional issues, is not having the ability and the jurisdiction of the District of Columbia with that MOU, but that's a, that's a different, separate, and distinct issue. So, in, in my opinion, in the spirit of what the, what the, the task force was trying to apply, it should be in the completed. Now, is it going to be a continual thing that we do? Absolutely.
Yeah. So, I, I tend to agree, and I think one of the things that would be helpful, you had mentioned last week that there's typically a cadence for when certain items come up for re-review. Are these protocols like every three years, you go back and take another look, or?
When, when we talk about protocols, so, there's, there's different things that, that we, we talk about training, and that, there's nothing necessarily in writing that says that we must do certain training with this certain allied agency, or there's nothing in writing. These are just common sense, mutual aid, working together type situations. There's nothing that we have in writing with Prince George County regarding that, and we have an MOU with Montgomery County that talks about resource sharing, but it also talks about, and the Park Police, then it also talks about, you know, some of the, the response to certain calls, and there is no stipulated review date such as our general orders. We don't have that for these, but these are just common sense approaches. There's not necessarily, we can't put in writing that, okay, we are going to share information, real-time crime analysis, or we're going to work jointly with you to address certain situations. They're very fluid in nature, so this isn't necessarily something when you talk about, you know, protocols, it's not necessarily something that's in writing, if that makes any sense. I don't know if I explained that that well, but it's not the same as a general order that is specifically in writing to do a specific thing for a specific topic. This is so varied that, that it not necessarily, you know, one shoe fits all, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. No, that, that's helpful, because I was, I was envisioning that there was actually a protocol that's in place that maybe is not is not the same as the MOU, but some, maybe it is a part of the MOU, like an agreement in terms of how you would respond to different events and the like. So and it would be incorporated somehow and agreed upon trainings, the joint trainings that you all would do and that that would be in writing somewhere, but it sounds like maybe it's.
It is with it is with the jurisdictions in which we have MOUs. And we have an MOU with with Montgomery County and Park Police that are in Montgomery County. We don't have that. And to be candid, no jurisdictions have that in writing. They don't have that type of resource sharing. Just just to understand as well, COG, everyone that's a member of the council of governments also has that agreement through COG for resource sharing. For example, when the incidents incidents, and I won't give one specific, occurred in the District of Columbia, through that agreement, we they requested our officers and our resources to respond to that incident. So we, as members of COG, can request that as well, mutual aid assistance, as well as the District of Columbia can do that. Now, when you're going into another jurisdiction like the District of Columbia, there are situations like when with my former agency, when we assisted with the parade, for example, for during the presidential inauguration. All of our officers had to be sworn in on a temporary basis as law enforcement officers in the District of Columbia. So there are many different ways that this is kind of in writing, I guess, through COG. But if you're talking about the the multiple jurisdictions, so just in in Tacoma Park, for example, on any given day, we have the Department of Natural Resources in the city the other day. So we could have Metro Transit Police, we could have Montgomery County Police, we could have Prince George County Police, we could have MTA Police, Maryland Transit Administration Police. So there are multiple different agencies. The most important thing for us is that we have relationships and we have, you know, with certain people. So when things happen, we know how to respond, we know how to share resources and so on and so forth. So we can, we can definitely share our mutual aid agreements with Montgomery County as well as the Park Police, as well as the COG kind of overreaching agreement, which is not just Maryland, it's Maryland, DC and Virginia.
Yep. I recall as part of the the COG board hearing about that. I think that would be helpful if we can get a little bit more information about the agreements that are already in place. Because I'm more inclined to think that this one, you know, if this just becomes part of our 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 regular work, we've done the lift to get to the point where we have certain things in place. I'm more inclined to say, hey, this might need to move to the completed section, especially if we're going to continue to keep the MOU related items for the other jurisdictions open. And see some hands. Councilmember Westlick?
Thank you. My first process, because I wanted to chime in about I I'm glad that we're putting back on the table the discussion about whether or not there is an ongoing task force, primarily because I'm thinking of understanding the environment that brought about this 2021 report and how in 2025, there's also a very strong need to us for us to think about public safety for our community, and it's different. And unfortunately, I worry that there will continue to be new and unforeseen things that might put our residents at risk in different ways. So I think having a mechanism to better support us with that could could be very useful. I also have my list of questions. Should I just go into that? Okay. Okay. Thank you, City Manager Spirito and Chief DeVal for all of this information. I tried to do a better job than last week of jotting down my questions. So for recommendation three, which, okay, establish 24 hour line and online system where residents can request a non armed police response. Can residents request a non armed police response? Today?
The simple answer is no. And there are not many jurisdictions where you have a non armed police response, or we could hire anyone to go to some of these calls for service. I think that there's a people don't understand the the violent nature of certain calls for service. And I think when we responded to this particular item, it was more mainly related to calls that we could designate. So I think the referral to our mental health pilot, what we're trying to do with that with that redirection of calls is for mental health calls. Ones that would not require a police officer would be diverted to clinicians only. Therefore, that would be a non police response. But is there a number that you can call to say, I want a non armed police officer or not? No, there's that's not. And I think that that became more complicated and I recall the conversations when the task force had these these conversations. And I think they were thinking more along the lines of like a neighborhood services or some type of other resource that that would be able to handle certain calls for service. But I'd have to go back and take a deep dive into it. But the 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 straight answer is no. But I think what we're trying to do through the pilot and through other things is to divert as many calls away from a police response. And we're also doing that not necessarily with with residents calling in and asking for a non armed police response, but also through using technology as a force multiplier. So every time we install a new red light camera, a new speed camera, a new traffic, excuse me, a stop sign camera, we are eliminating the need for a police officer to have direct contact and have those contacts. So we're using that as a force multiplier as well. We're also using other technology, the camera trail that's currently placed at Flower and Piney Branch is another example of that. So I don't know if that directly answered your question, but to dance, no, there's no, there's no number you can call to get a.
I also just want to piggyback off of of that point because just in terms of context. And I would have to go back and take a look at where these recommendations fell, because there was a very strong desire amongst the task force to make sure that we were able to address the growing mental health needs that were were happening in the area, keeping in mind that we're dealing with COVID, people coming out of COVID, there's just a lot of stuff happening. And 988 was not fully flushed out within the state of Maryland yet. So it 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 was something that people knew was going to happen, but it hadn't really gone live. And so just in terms of the timing of it, for me, because I flagged this as well, I am reminded of the fact that, you know, if 988 was fully flushed out in the way in which it is right now, would we have the same recommendation? Because that hotline really does try to get at what I think was the spirit, which was more around trying to make sure that there were non armed police responses, particularly as it relates to residents that were in the midst of mental health crises.
Yeah, thank you. No point of order, may I may I also add on to that particular point? I'm thinking of a couple of things that have come up lately and this particular idea. For example, when I had a home birth, I called and I called 911, well, actually, I didn't call 911. My household called 911 and what I really needed was an IV tube and I needed to get to the hospital. But the first people to come in were the police with their guns and my new baby. And it was, I was lying naked on my bed. It was the most uncomfortable thing I've ever experienced in my life. And honestly, I was like, do you really both need to come into my bedroom here? We were very clear on the phone about what we needed. And and and, you know, that would be an instance where I could imagine police might need to be present, as in many unpredictable situations, perhaps, you know, perhaps in a remote situation, you don't know exactly what's going on. But it, you know, if they were in partnership, as I guess I am hoping that this will come where you could ask for non armed police to be part of the team that comes out for your particular call seeming, it seems to me that would be a better, you know, a better thing that we could we could make happen possibly as part of our pilot. And 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 the other kind of call that I'm thinking, obviously, that was a unique thing I just told you, but but I could imagine other scenarios like that would be where you see a homeless person who clearly doesn't look, maybe they're even passed out, right? And again, it's a situation where I've usually called 911 if I needed to help the person. But as you know, we were just talking to Bethesda Cares. And again, it would be, you know, you can see maybe the person not engaged in anything that's even remotely violent. They they're so passed out, they wouldn't be violent. But if you could get somebody who might be able to talk to them and just sit and talk to them and help them with whatever, that might be another instance where I could imagine that you would like to have a mental health crisis specialist with the police. So I guess my hope is that we could have the ability to ask for that kind of companion response.
Let me just first first address the call that you mentioned. That is not a police call. That would be a dispatch call. When you call into 911, you can specifically ask for the fire department, not the police department. I don't know what happened with that. But we would never be dispatched to that type of call. I'm not sure what happened. But for residents that call in that need fire department assistance, you ask for the fire department, you call 911, not police. We would never respond to that type of situation. I'm not sure why it happened.
That's before your time.
But 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 if that were, but if we were to get a call for service like that, we wouldn't respond. There's no need, that's a fire department response. So there are all certain calls that 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 you you mentioned homeless subjects. Normally, if it's a health related issue, it's going to go to the fire to the fire department for them to go out, the ambulance to go out and check them out. We are called out as well to protect them. Normally, before we even get there, they can have us disregard. I can't stress enough that some of these encounters are extremely violent and they go from zero to 100 in no time at all. Protecting our mental health counselors, our fire department is paramount, and that's the priority. If we're not needed on a call for service, we don't remain on a call for service. And many times we are we are discontinued before we even get to a call. So I think it's it's much more complicated in trying to figure out what type of calls. Because a lot of times calls come in at one thing as one thing, and then they turn out to be something else.
And I just want to go back to Councilmember Westlick that was she you were asking your question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to recommendation 25, which is, okay, quantify, this is about incentivizing de-escalation and crisis avoidance. And I believe we have already, I'm not sure if from 2021 or not, but we have seen a a decrease, we we've seen a reduction in use of force, I believe, for our police department, which to me seems kind of similar. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that in case that gets at that.
Our incidents of use of force are extremely low. Extremely low. We, you know, have over 14,000 calls for service, and I think use of forces, I don't want to, don't quote me on this, but we're, you know, in the in the handful, maybe nine or 10 or 11. What this is referring to is our reward system. So we have already implemented a reward system through our evaluation system. One of the most, this first on our significant task functions is de-escalation. So I think I talked previously about some of the the evaluation system, which was geared towards enforcement and particular numbers, like the number of citations that you issue or the number of arrests. This this evaluation and reward system has to be consistent with what we want from our officers. So if we want our officers to de-escalate calls, we want our officers to engage the community, our evaluation and reward system has to be consistent with that. And it was inconsistent with that. So I think what this is saying is, once the city relaunches our entire reward and evaluation system, we already have a plan in place that specifically singles out de-escalation as a significant task function and rewards officers in their annual evaluations for taking such action.
Okay, great, thank you. Recommendation 50. Sorry, I have a couple more. Oh, this is about the civil asset forfeiture. And it said that we would be getting a written overview. And I'm just curious on a broad timeline on what when that might be, because I know nothing about this.
I can very easily, that we have not seized any assets for as long as I can remember. We just don't do it anymore. We used to, you know, if if someone was involved in drug activity, we'd seize their vehicle and their money. We just don't do that anymore. So I can provide the the basic memo and some overview of the number of occurrences that have actually happened in the city. They're they're few and far between, and I couldn't even find one that was recent. So that's what that memo would do is basically just, we still have, we still want the ability. If we have a major drug kingpin that we we stop them and they have four kilos of cocaine, we still want the ability to seize their vehicle. But we're not going to seize a vehicle for someone having, you know, marijuana, which was traditionally used to be done. I mean, you'd have, you know, some amounts of marijuana that may be distribution and and, you know, the city would move forward with forfeiture. I think when I first got here, we had four or five vehicles that we'd seize that we ended up having to to sell or give back. So we just don't do that as in principle. But that's what that memo will kind of overview is the number of occurrences over the last five or six years and what our policy is.
Great, thank you. And I just have one more, which is on, oh, number eight, which is about training, ensuring sensitivity, cultural competency, fairness. And I know that it said that we might get a fuller list or more information on that, but I just wanted to check because I know in the police department's annual report, I did see a list of of all the trainings, which was fantastic. I would love more information, you know, because it's hard to know is like, was that a two hour webinar that one person went to? Is this a three day conference, you know? So I'm not sure what details will be shared, but I I hope that there'll be a little more fleshed out to give a sense of the depth of the, there's any particular trainings.
Yeah, the memo I provided to the deputy city manager, the overview is the specific courses that were attended, what the duration was and all that. And there are four different courses, some of them are continued courses and so on and so forth. So I think you'll you'll see that and we can, and if if any of the courses don't have specific duration, whether or not it was a two hour, I mean, there's a big difference in a two hour webinar as opposed to a two day course. So I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to follow up on that question because it's something that I flagged, that it's that we get information, not just as it pertains to communication staff within the police department, but but our other communication staff as well. That, Councilmember Schlegel, sign your hand, go up.
Could you come back to me in just a second?
I sure can.
I have some background noise, sorry.
No worries, we'll come back to you. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you. I have a couple of topics I just wanted to go into a little bit. Looking at number, recommendation number 39, invest in programs. This is, these are both things that fall under the area of sense of belonging. And they and scholarships for job training for underemployed and and people reentering the community after released from incarceration. That's one. And and the other I'm going to come back to has to do with cultural diversity and and fostering conversations and other things that build a sense of community and belonging. And and these, I'm going to direct these more to you, City Manager to Spirito than really to the police chief, because they really have to do more with the community as a whole. And I think the the recommendations really are intended to be more community wide than just the police department. I was approached by a resident who wants the city of Tacoma Park to support legislation to allow incarcerated individuals while they're still incarcerated to vote. And I wonder actually whether, Madam Mayor, whether that's something that's come up in previous councils. I actually haven't heard it discussed, but apparently legislation has been supported in the state of Maryland before or has been introduced. And and he, this, this resident actually wants us to support people to be able to vote in local elections too. But to be able to to continue to vote as a resident, even while you're incarcerated, when you know that you're going to be returning to the community. I mean, I think it's an idea that I would like to maybe have the council discuss it, discuss at some future date. But to continue to have skin in the game, if you're going to be returning to the community, it seemed to me like something worth discussing. And anyway, I'll put that out there. That's not really on the city manager, but as something to sort of have a vote of confidence that somebody is going to be coming back here, that they would still be able to have a voice in civic affairs, seemed like it might merit a conversation. And then I wanted to look at number 48. I would tell you what page number, oh, yeah, here we go. Page number six, offer courses that allow residents and staff to learn about the breadth of identities, et cetera. And you note as an in a status report, in 2021, we hosted the Tacoma Park Equity Walk. And that that's a cool thing, that's a long time ago now. And I was really thinking that this is something that in terms of our recommendations, that perhaps there's a way to look at this more holistically and at other city programs, such as the Arts and Humanities Program and and other things that we do support as many opportunities to. as many opportunities to advance this idea of cultural, cultural diversity and opportunities to foster conversations. The Equity Walk was certainly a good one. But I think a lot of the programming that, that you could be citing here from this year, for example, I think we, we do a good job at this in, in the programming that, that the Arts Department has been putting on. It's just been really across the board, every culture you can think of, the dance programs, the poetry programs, the, the art and literature programs, that perhaps we could make a special effort to highlight those and also to include more of a cultural conversation, not just the dance program, but offer members of that community a chance to talk a little bit more, like to use, to highlight those programs and then enhance them a little bit with more of a, of an effort to have the conversations go along with the art, you know, so that the members of our community, that those, those cultural presentations highlight, then have a chance to strut their stuff a little bit as part of that. I think it would be something that would enhance the programs we already have. But I'd, I'd take credit for what we're already doing, but I might see if there's a way to build on that as a way. The arts programming, it's already laying the groundwork, and it could really form the nucleus for doing more in that way. Because we do have lots and lots of that artistic talent here at home, as well as the, the cultural diversity. Anyway, I, I think we, you could point to some more recent examples. It's already building, it's some building blocks for that. Okay, well, thank you. And finally, I just wanted to thank Mr. McNally for the memo about the Connectors Program. I think you have the seeds of some interesting conversations there. We still have to talk about it in our work session, but it was helpful to have those ideas laid out. And I would like to know more about the two programs that you highlighted and why you picked those two programs. So we'll, I guess we'll hear about that from you either now or when we talk next, next, next time.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
You chose two particular programs to highlight, and I was interested in why those were the ones that you chose, if you have some thoughts on, on, on that that you wanted to share with us.
Well, the, the first one, I think, is the NLC, the National League of Cities Program, and.
You cited two cities that had cultural connector programs.
Oh, yes.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah. No, these two programs, and they really fed into what was put together in the vision statement, which was provided as part of that, the emails as well. And really, what these two different cities do is they've been successful in incorporating the different community organizations that are, that already exist, and they've been able to leverage them to create internal capacity that maybe they haven't had before. And I think we can see a lot of similarities between what has, you know, those situations. I'm not familiar with the specific situations, other than what is working right now. But from what I've seen in conversations that I've had and with different community organizations, if there's a sense that there's a need to increase capacity, both internally with the city and also externally for those, those organizations. And that's something that I think those different examples do really well, is it brings people together in a way that works for all. And so definitely highly encourage you all to take a look at those two. And as we continue to explore what these different programs and initiatives might look like, like Community Connectors, I think we can take a lot of really great lessons from those, those successful examples. And it's something that would, especially with the National League of Cities, having that structure and process of really working through with our different community organizations, it would allow us to take those lessons and apply them for what we're doing here in the city.
Right, thank you very much. I just want to have one quick follow-up question for the clerk as it relates to the point that Councilmember Landman raised about item 39. And I just want to confirm that my understanding is true. In the city, if you are a convicted felon, you can still vote, correct? If you are on probation, you can vote, correct?
Correct.
If you are awaiting any kind of sentencing, you can still vote? Meaning you're, you're out, you're in court, but you're still?
Yes.
Yes. The, the only challenge is if you are incarcerated, you are in prison. And I could imagine that that would be a logistical challenge in terms of being able to get that person the ballot and being able to get them, or at least have them come to actually vote.
It would be a logistical challenge.
Thank you.
But I take the point. But yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that, that that point was clear. And also, as it relates to item 39 around the job trainings, one of the things that I do just want to make sure that we're highlighting is the fact that workforce development was something that we also added as an element to our quality of life grants, so that we can try to make sure that we were providing opportunities for nonprofit organizations within the community to also be able to aid in aspects of workforce development. The, just want to see, forgot, okay. Councilmember Schlegel, are you ready? Or should I go to Councilmember Dibala?
I'm good.
Okay, wonderful. We can.
Okay. I, I have three, and I'll, I'm going to try to be really quick tonight. The first is from slide five. It's around number 39 and number 40. There's kind of a nexus there that we've been talking about for the past few minutes. It would also include number 48 on the next page. I, I'm remembering in the fall when the youth council put forward the idea of a, kind of a first jobs or second jobs, job fair towards Tacoma Park youth. And I feel that in terms of capacity building, we have a real opportunity there for a first and second jobs kind of program. And it would be something that not only within the city government we'd need to support, but also working with some of our, our local organizations. I don't know if this is a question. It's, it just is a proposal to, to council members. Because when I look at number 39, the recommendation, it seems to be saying, well, this is all something where you can call Montgomery County. But the exciting thing about, about the jobs fair concept was that that would be local. And so in that sense, it would also be implicitly building those kinds of, of mentorships, referenced in number 40, and as well as the, the greater cultural cross collaboration that's mentioned in, in number 48. So I, I guess that's mainly a comment, unless it's somehow we can flag it for our resolution. My next one is related to number 28. And number 28, I, I did want to ask, I had asked this last time, and I'm still not quite clear. We haven't been mentioning, I don't see Prince George's County mentioned here. And I, I do appreciate the chief's emphasis that when incidents happen, there's a very good responsive working relationship with Prince George's County. I'm more kind of wondering about when, when there are patterns of activity, such as things, things that are persistent patterns. Is what, do we have a memory, memorandum of understanding with Prince George's County? Would one help? And what would help in terms of addressing ongoing kind of cross-jurisdictional problems, such as the ones I described in my, in my comment earlier?
I, I think it, it goes back to number 29, and it talks about cross-jurisdictional protocols. An MOU would have nothing to do with us addressing cross-border crime issues. It just doesn't. The MOUs are mainly resource sharing. They add jurisdiction, but it would have nothing to do with that. There are, I want to be clear to all of our residents, there are no limitations at all from resource sharing, addressing cross-border crime issues with any of our jurisdictions. And that's the District of Columbia, Prince George's County, Montgomery County. We don't have issues doing that currently. The issue we have is obviously jurisdiction for fresh pursuit going into the District of Columbia and vice versa with them coming into, into Maryland. And that's where that MOU would help that issue. But as far as, as resource sharing and addressing cross-crime issues, I can give you multiple examples where we, our detectives have worked together to solve crimes. The recent, you know, when we had all of the, the robberies of our food truck burglaries, our food truck, food truck stores that led to multiple arrests across multiple jurisdictions. So we are, we already have that in place, and MOU isn't going to enhance that in any way.
I appreciate that. Why are there MOUs with Montgomery County and Park Police? Is that because there's land in the city that's controlled by the county and the parks?
Correct. So we're in the, we are, we are in the same county. They are specifically with Park Police. It codifies responsibilities when responding to the parks with fall, that fall in our jurisdiction. And with Montgomery County, it just makes sense to have a, a resource sharing agreement and also an MOU with, with the, the county that oversees the jurisdiction that we're in. Now, understand, we're the primary jurisdiction here in, in Tacoma Park, but there are times when, when they need to respond and to assist us and vice versa. And that's why we, we have those, those particular MOUs.
Okay, great, that's very helpful. And I appreciate that. I'll just go to my, my third item, my last one, which was number three, which a, a couple of my colleagues have also mentioned. I'm, I'm interested, Chief Dival, in how, to what extent is the loop of communication closed around particular residents or subjects who have mental health issues? In other words, if, if on one particular Tuesday I call 911 because, say, I have a relative in my home who's having a mental health crisis, perhaps that would get routed to our, our in-house mental health clinician. And so excited that there's going to be a second one coming on board. If the next Thursday, someone else in my household calls 988, will the 988 person receiving the call know that a Tacoma Park mental health clinician has already interacted with the subject? Or vice versa? Or how is, or does the system communicate and show care for individuals in that sense of closing the loop?
Let me just, so, so 988 is a national number where anyone across the country can call. It is not tied into our 911 system. But for example, any call that comes from a certain residence will be recorded in our computerated dispatch system, and we will have a record of it. So the, if, if any call comes into our systems, we will have a record of it. So in other words, if we're responding to a call at 15 Elm Street, we will know in advance how many previous calls were there, what the nature of the calls were. But the 988 system, which is not a police response, does not tie into that. Unless there was some nexus between 988, for example, someone called 988 and they were attempting to commit suicide. And then we got called as a result. That is the only way currently that those two systems communicate. And they are, they are just very different type systems. And, and I think if we provided an overview of kind of what 988 is, because I think a lot of people aren't familiar with it, that would give you a better understanding of why that can't necessarily work.
Okay, can't necessarily work. I, I would just like to flag that maybe there's a way that, that some, some greater level of coordination is possible. And I'm not challenging you in what you're saying, but just something for our council to think about. Thank you, that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, yes, let's see if I, if I can, if I can talk. 48, I just want to say, I was looking at that as more of a, a revisiting of the equity work that was done a few years ago in the city, rather, rather than, rather than just educational programs. So I wanted to focus on, to, for further review and discussion that haven't been brought up yet by council members. Number 16 about mental health for employees. And I would like to ask the city manager to, and, and acting HR director to respond to us by email after they've had a chance to think about if the employee assistance program is working well, if it's doing enough, or if there's something else that they feel that, that we need. And on 17, the rental, sorry, rental housing subsidies. Two things. Is there a list that housing has? I don't need to have it, but does housing have the list of private landlords who already do this? Have they give, has it been provided to our staff? Second question. I think at some point, there was an estimate of what that would look like if the city council adopted that. Some kind of subsidy for, for officers in, in the city. And if that can be found, I'd like to see it so we have some idea of what we're talking about there. Thank you.
Yeah, we could, we can look into that.
Do you need to repeat?
No, 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 I, I don't want to put you through that at all, Councilmember Dibala.
Do you need to repeat for me?
No, no. I, I, what we're, what we're doing is trying to remember whether or not there was some estimate in terms of cost associated with offering a subsidy for officers, a housing subsidy for our housing. I would have to go back and check some of my, my old notes. I don't know why I feel like maybe at some point, we might have received an estimate, but it, I maybe misremembered.
That's two of us that think that, so it must be something that we would, yeah.
I, I recalled it being about the purchase of a home, but I may be recalling it differently, but I'm sure.
About homes, not rental, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think we just all need to go back and look at some of these notes from a couple of years ago.
We're, we're the only three that were here at the time. Between the three of us, somebody will find it.
Because I feel like we talked about this recommendation and there was an estimate thrown around.
Information about what that would look like.
Yeah. Councilmember Schlegel, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, is, is, am I completely making this up? Or was there ever a conversation about the idea of officers being able to choose take-home vehicle or subsidy for living in Tacoma Park?
There has never been a conversation about a take-home vehicle and living in the city of Tacoma Park. That's, I, I'm not aware of that ever occurring.
No, the, the reason why there's subsidy, if I remember correctly, the reason why rental housing subsidies and programs to ensure that officers can live in Tacoma Park was a recommendation that was made by the task force was because the, the idea of, if your officers live and are vested and can engage with members of the community and, and just as a member of the community, not when they're in uniform, then there would be more inclination for officers to be able to better engage in terms of the community-based aspect of policing. So the idea was not necessarily one that relates to like cost savings in any way. It was more about trying to identify ways to encourage having our officers live here so that they could be a part of the community, get to know the individuals that they're serving.
Understood, thank you. I was just thinking that from a where do you find the money type of perspective?
No, those were two different things. Okay, all right. Well, we're going to continue this conversation next week too. So thank you all so much for continuing this conversation. Next week, we will be talking about draft resolution language. So look forward to seeing everyone next week. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to a close. Everybody have a great evening.